We finished our cooking class.
Dear Father, thank you again for allowing us to come out again this month of June, Lord, to do your will. And, Lord, let us do that which you've called us to do and be willing service in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Recognize everyone, all the council's present. And first thing on the agenda, to approve the agenda, does everyone have a chance to look at it? If so, have a motion to approve or reject.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, Rock, Park, move. Maurice Grant, seconds. All four. All right, now, and, uh, everyone had a chance to look at the minutes, previous month meeting. And if no, any corrections, if not, do we have a motion to approve?
No motion to approve the minutes, previous month?
Second.
All four. All right, Sam. All right, please report. Everyone had a chance to look at the budget report.
I have a couple of questions. On the chuck wagon, how much does it rent? This is paid one, so the, uh...
Chuck wagon, a hundred dollars, that's what I thought.
That's a per day?
Per day, yeah.
So if you rent, you get twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four.
Down there at eleven o'clock kicking people out, y'all get out of here. On, uh, page two, Arthur's Pictures, new controls at the lift station, we spent thirty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. And we asked for thirty-one thousand in January, and that's what was approved. What was the difference, I guess?
Taxes.
Taxes? Okay, so that thirty-one was without taxes?
Yeah.
Got you.
Yeah, I had to have everyone over there as re-done because it didn't have practice, the taxes are free on them.
Got you. And one other thing that I noticed on the, uh, page three, fire station repair three eighty-five eighty-seven. That is about a dollar and something cents less than what we had spent last month.
Page three?
Page three. It may be less than a dollar, it's just very few cents. Now, you want to make sure that that's...
Two seventy-five? Two thirty-five? Now, that was, that is a total for the up-to-date hour.
Okay, well, in May, we spent three eighty-six thirty-seven.
And this month, we spent what?
Three eighty-five eighty-seven.
A little less.
We're making some money somewhere.
We need to always bring that out and keep that rolling, huh?
Yeah, we need to expand on that and make that a little larger. That's just a heads up for you. I don't know what happened there.
I need that.
That may have been a missed button, fat fingered a button.
I don't know.
One more question on the City Hall, the utilities for the gas, it didn't change at all from last month?
Pardon me? Didn't change at all last month?
Yeah, it didn't change at all.
Well, the gas company kinda got a little, well, you heard on the news, they overcharged, so what's on? So, I think it was this past month that all of our gas bills were zero.
You got a credit, do we get a credit?
You've got credit, yeah, yeah.
How much of credit did the city give?
Well, it was, I can't think of...
Can't remember?
God damn, it was what our bill would have been.
One month, about five million? I noticed also, and I won't ask before I point out all this stuff, on the electric bill for, uh, the Arclay City Shop, Arclay Circle Shop, is coming out of the general fund. But back here on the waterworks, we also showed that we paid an electric bill for the walk, for the shop.
We got two that's titled Arclay, uh, it's, uh, shops. This one down here on First Street is a waterwork shop. The one at Arclay is, it comes out of general fund. Now then, that one, we get all that money back. Johnny pays us that money back.
Who is Johnny?
Johnny Dugan. He's the one that's got little store down there.
Okay.
So he re...
He reimburses the utilities?
He pays the utilities, yeah.
That was, that was another question I had, took a wrong in renting for two hundred dollars a month. And...
It was the money, it was three hundred dollars.
Anytime you have something like that for the people of the city, you go with one like chuck wagon. We'll never make money on chuck wagons. It's out there to make money.
No, it's just, it's just a convenience for the public.
Maybe you don't think of reunion, this is a pretty good facility to have.
Yeah. Basically, you don't want all of it to be held. On, uh, page three?
Page three.
Page three, or...
Uh, page, uh, on the waterworks, I'm sorry, page three of the waterworks.
Waterworks, okay.
I'm seeing membership dues, five hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Yeah, the health department, uh, and this is something that kinda irritates me, but the health department charges us a five hundred dollar, uh, health department or rural water? Rural water?
Rural water.
Charges us, uh, membership fees, and...
I thought we had our own water system.
Well, we do, but now they charge us a membership fee, and in return, they come down here and help us for, with various projects that we're...
Well, we need to make sure we get five hundred and thirty-six dollars out of them.
I know, but it's one of the things that's, you either pay it or, or don't pay it.
Well, if you don't pay it, you don't get their helpless stuff.
That's right.
So, well, I'm saying, when they come down, we gotta keep them here three, four days, get our money worked.
I agree. I agree, yeah. Anyway, though, any other questions, Rob?
We, uh, on the waterworks, for the percent of the budget for the year, we're a negative four hundred and sixty-three percent. Uh, page three.
That's not a good, a good figure, is it?
That's kinda what I was thinking, that can't be right. Our net income is not right, I think, was the problem is, versus our expenditure.
Page three on the waterworks.
It's paid along, so...
Something don't seem square with the world there. It may be a missed figure, it may be a missed button buttoned up.
Yeah, the page out of line is like, uh...
Well, you have to go to the line, but the third line from the bottom is a better line, that's twenty-three percent total expenditures.
So we spent what's on the third line, and we had the fourth line as income?
Yeah.
For the year?
Uh...
Missed a button somewhere, something?
I think that's something that the computer put in, it's not really... Uh, I'm gonna back up here and look at something. Total income, basically, is the main one. Total income was seventy thousand plus, and the total expenditures was sixty-five thousand. So, uh...
I guess the total income's what I'm not seeing.
It's almost about the middle of the page on page one.
Let me page one again, any waterworks, page one, on page one in the waterworks.
Uh, about just above the middle of the page, left-hand column.
Got you.
Total income on that.
Okay, so that was, okay. Your net was, uh, what we made?
Yeah.
That still doesn't make sense with the negative...
No, it don't.
...sixty-three percent.
Oh, I can't explain why the computer puts that in there.
They divided that into that, that's what they got.
It didn't, the computer, I reckon. What negative, Rob?
See, they divided that into that, and that's how they got it. If that was a negative figure, that's what made it come up negative like that.
Right, because it doesn't show, it just, yeah.
Because it doesn't show the seventy thousand?
The seventy, yeah, it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah.
You have to show it on this line, the net ordinary income, seventy, and then it would show that correct number there. Only other thing I have about the budget is, uh, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out back here, for the year, negative thirty-four nine ninety-seven, on the last page of the waterworks. I'm guessing everybody can see this?
Page three of the waterworks is water, Rob?
Uh, the very last page of the waterworks. Well, mine showed as page one, that's why I didn't call it page number. Negative thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents.
It's on the last page of the waterworks?
It says one, it says one.
On the balance sheet?
Yes. That's for the year, correct, or is that for the month? I don't know.
Well, that's a retained earning.
You got that number there, and if you turn to the last page of the general fund, page five, your net income is negative three thou, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars. I know we're a long way from the end of the year, but, uh, just halfway through the year, and we, we're down seventy thousand dollars?
Well, the main thing we need to go by, Rob, is by the waterwork and that water. That's, uh, that's actual expenditure and income, that's seventy and sixty-five.
I guess my concern is, we're already talking about, we, we, we have discussed toward the end of the year, having to ask for more money.
Yeah.
And, and I'm seeing it halfway through the year, and I'm seeing these negative numbers. We, uh, we might want to jump on top of this now, before we get too...
Well, we really don't know exactly what we're gonna need though right now, Rob.
No, I mean, the more we cut out right now, the more we, uh, not have to ask for.
Yeah.
Because we're going on the same track to the end of the year, we're gonna need another hundred and four, uh, seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Just to make the ba, balance, the budget balance.
Well, uh, you know, taking this seventy and this sixty-five, now it's true that we're gonna spend more money, uh, and that sixty-five thousand will increase, but same time, the seventy thousand is gonna increase.
Right, that's just for the waterworks part, you're talking about correct?
Yeah.
I'm talking about, we began with a hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
Now, you're in general fund?
No, I'm in the waterworks.
In the waterworks.
And now we're at one twenty-seven eight oh eight. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
You're on the, on the...
Balance sheet, the waterworks balance sheet.
Balance sheet, waterworks.
Uh, opening balance, a hundred and fifty-eight.
All right, opening balance was, uh...
That's right.
One twenty-seven.
And then we had a net income coming in, too.
Yeah, the opening balance was one twenty-seven, we've got a hundred and fifty-eight now.
Yeah, 'cause see, you took it out, but then I had the net income coming in, too, and that's why it went up to one twenty-seven, wouldn't it?
Okay, opening balance equity is one fifty-eight.
Right, and then they took the thirty-four out, but then they added four thousand, forty-five hundred ninety-five back in.
Yeah.
So our opening balance is one twenty-seven oh eight, we get...
Part of that, Rob, is these, uh, big expenditures we've made on replacing these pump controls.
Mm-hmm.
See, that, that come in as part of it.
Okay, yeah.
And I don't think I have put that in the budget yet.
Yeah, that was supposed to come out of Arco money.
Yeah, well, that's, it's waterworks. It's coming through waterworks, I put that.
I, I got you, you gotta, we gotta appropriate the Arco money to go through the waterworks to replace it.
Right, yeah. And then pay that...
And then on the general fund, I guess it's the same thing? We're in the same sheet?
I see, we spent money, I take thirty-three money out of general fund, but we haven't received any back yet, so that'll, that'll crack part of that.
Thirty-seven thousand?
No, I won't crack thirty-seven thousand, we're gonna crack part of it, you know?
I just, I want everybody to be aware that we are, according to the way this looks and the way I read it, by the end of the year, we're gonna need another seventy thousand dollars if we don't do something different. I know you're aware, Mr. Booker, you may be aware of it.
Anything that, anything y'all say that we can cut, well, let me know.
I think we were cutting Mary's pay.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
You know, it's already cut.
That won't do much for us, will it? Cutting that pay won't do much for us, that's just something that...
I don't think that Frank said this out, man. All right, any other questions? Motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve the budget?
Sure.
Page four?
I second it.
All four. All right. Now then, the next thing, next good thing. This is the, uh, contract documents for painting the water tank. Anybody wants to read all that real quick later when that's it? But we will advertise for bid June the twenty-ninth. So, I forgot now what time it was, but anyone that wants to attend the bid opening, it will be here at City Hall, and I'll have to get you the time of it later on. But, uh, we have got an engineer, and, uh, the engineer will handle all of that. Uh, we'll just be here on the roof, if you might say. So, uh, and there won't be any contracts signed that date. Uh, first thing will happen will be, we'll see what the low bid is, and, uh, compare it to what we have got grant funding, and see if it's enough to pay for the, uh, low bid. If it's not, then the engineer will go back and try to scan through this and see if there's anything that can be cut off. Uh, there is a couple of alternates in there that, um, have to be, be cut off. One alternate is a catwalk on the very top of it. Uh, there are a whole lot of things in there that, that, uh, in the con, in the bid, that, um, it required by New Health Department rules, like the overflow pipe at the top, it sticks out a couple of feet at the top now, and, um, runs off down the side of the tank if it overflowed, but it hardly ever overflows unless something's wrong. And, uh, but that's got to be ran to the ground within two foots over the ground. Uh, the opening in the bottom of, of the stand pipe, uh, which is about eighteen inches right now, uh, it's got to be a diameter two-foot diameter. Uh, several other things got to be, such as a, a mixer, that'll, kinda like an aerator and sewer pump, it'll mix the water, the chlorine in the tank. I mean, water, the chlorine can be injected into the water just the same as it is right now.
And keep it from settling.
But it'll, yeah, it'll keep it mixing, so, uh, that's a requirement also that's got to be done. So, and then we've got, uh, the catwalk on top is something that we want, but if there's not enough money to fund it, well, then...
How often do, how often do we send a city employee up there?
We don't.
So that would be strictly for the contractor?
Anybody that goes up there is a, an inspector or an engineer, so, uh, we don't go up there.
So the catwalk will be for their benefit?
Right.
We'll have to have it inspected, is it yearly inspection or five-year?
Uh, I think it's five years, and that's something that it used to be, okay, if you do it, you don't do, don't do it, you don't want to. But nowadays, it's required. Fact is, we had to get down in my near big, uh, to not do it this time. We, we, they want us to do it right now.
And we're trying to tell them, wait, we're gonna get it fixed first.
Right, we're gonna paint the tank first, and then it'll be a hundred percent okay, but they finally decided to give us a little time, just to make sure we don't do it. So, uh, but anyway, though, that's, that's requirement from the health department. And, uh, so, anyway, though, I'd say if, uh, anyone wants to attend the bid opening, well, then, uh, you're most welcome. And, uh, it won't necessarily be a public meeting, but anybody wants to go and can, so, uh...
Did we get the account set up for that, and the way it voted to set the account up for this money? We just gotta transfer?
Yeah, 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 that, that account's set up, and you and who has assigned the check over? Grant.
I think it was very Grant and one, wouldn't it?
Yeah, Grant, you heard Grant, yeah.
Oh, you just heard Grant, or you heard Grant and one?
I'm not, I, one may be on it, that you... I'm pretty sure I turned mine off. That's, uh, probably I turned mine off. What day did you say that was due? How, what day did you say that, the twenty-ninth of June? And I'm sorry, but I don't have the time. But I'll be, I can get the time, or you know? All right, now then, uh, uh, any, any questions about the, the painting the tank? Nope, okay. Uh, next item, quote here for the sewer pump, I know we approved this once, but, um, there was something wrong with the quote, and, uh, time we got it corrected, it was outdated, so we brought it back up, uh, bring it back up now, and to purchase a, uh, and this is not bid item, it's a sole, sole item, uh, forty-five hundred seventy-eight dollars seventy-six. Any questions, or do we have a motion to approve the request?
We already approved it once, didn't you say?
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the four thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents?
Second.
Second.
All four. Okay. All right, now then...
Is that somebody putting it in, or just buying it, and then...
No, no, that's installed, buying and installed. Uh, setting it up, ready, get you ready to go. Next item is the, the scales. Uh, I don't have an exact quote on this, but I know, uh, about what they'll cost, and they'll be about twenty-five hundred dollar piece, and we need two of them.
What brand is this?
Rob, I don't have that.
How often will they need to be calibrated?
A year.
Who will we have do that?
Uh, who we buy the chlorine from, who we buy chlorine from?
That's something chlorinator thing, I can't remember.
Yeah, the chlorinator thing, a little wrong.
Are they certified scale techs?
Oh, yeah, if they give us a piece of paper saying they are, they are. Any other questions?
I'd like to know what brand they are, and who's putting them in, or who we getting them from, and how much, you know, I'm, I'm trying not to nitpick stuff, but... I buy scale stuff every day. Buy a lot of Memphis scale, and it's expensive, I know it's expensive.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, this is probably a plate that big, that your bottle sits on?
About twelve four three inches, yeah, bottle sits on.
About eight dollars?
Yeah, bottle sits on.
Twenty-five?
Twelve one, we add, it's about that tall.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money for that particular scale.
I know, but it's one of them things that they can get it out of it, so...
Well, have we looked around for any cheaper?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you mind if I look?
No.
I'd like to, I make a motion, we table this till next month, I'd like to look for some scales myself, and maybe get you some ideas of some different stuff. I may not find anything better than what you found, Mr. Booker, but I know I deal with scale people a lot.
Do I hear a second on the table? I see. All right. All four. All right. Okay, next thing is, uh, update on the pavilion. Uh, I'll say this, then we'll let Joanne give us the detail. The pavilion date for advertising for bid is not known yet, but it's gonna be very shortly after the bid on a tank sometime, latter part of June or, or, uh, third of July, will be advertised in the pavilion for bid, and Joanne, will you give us a little further update?
Uh, yes, uh, the Fund Park Committee met, um, this past Wednesday, and we talked about, uh, scheduling the groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, we were trying to wait until they did publish the bid for it, so we'd know the contract and all that, but since that's not happening, we want to get through with this, so once they do start, we'll be out of their way. So we tend to be scheduled the groundbreaking ceremony for July twenty-first, that's a Friday, uh, eleven a.m. to about one o'clock. It probably won't last that long, but, um, you can allocate that time. Um, we talked about, um, having dignitaries to come and, um, speak at the ceremony. Um, we, possible, and this has not been confirmed, but possible speakers might be Danny Watson, Mike Ottwell, Joyce Elliott, Anna, Anna Powell, uh, from the Economic Development, uh, and possibly Janet Choate from, um, the bank, Farmers Bank at Hope. So, we're trying to get at least four of them, um, to participate, um, in the groundbreaking ceremony. Um, we also have our shovels, and, um, Shannon has, uh, gotten our hats with the City of Emmett on it, so the groundbreaking is shaping up. Um, because this is mid-July or late July, we can assume it's going to be hot, so we're looking at getting a tent, uh, to make sure that everybody is comfortable. We, we're, I'm getting some bid, some prices on that, but we'll have, basically, um, I will introduce, um, our contractor, our engineer, and if we have, since we won't have a contractor, that they can give us as many details, um, as they possibly can at that time. Um, we'll have an invocation... Um, we'll have an invocation, project details, opening remarks by the mayor. Our speakers will give, um, a brief talk. And then we'll have the actual ceremony. And after that, we'll have closing remarks and we'll have a small reception afterwards. So we're anticipating, um, advertising this on social media. We'll, uh, do flyers, banners, uh, we're going to make this a big event. We want everybody in, in, in Emmett, and I know it's a morning, but it is summertime, not everybody's. You know, out doing things, so we're hoping that we can get the City of Emmett involved. And have a great turnout. Uh, our invitations are ready and as soon as we confirm our speakers. Um, you should see the flyers and the information going out. And we'll make sure that we get this information in your packet or get it to you. But we're, we're still excited, um, about the possibilities. And the activities that having the pavilion will bring to the city.
Any questions for Joanne? I'd like to thank Joanne for all the hard work that she has put in this. Something like this is not easy.
Lot of hours going to do it, a lot of hours.
And the rules you're playing with today, don't bear shelter for tomorrow. You get up with a different set of rules tomorrow.
What type of tent were you looking at for?
Um, probably a brain tent, probably about twenty by forty, something like that.
Yeah, uh, I mean, y'all do what you wanna do, but I know Brazil would come out, they came out and set up one for us to cook hamburgers under last weekend.
Okay.
Free of charge.
I'll check with them.
Uh, they're like, what are they, twenty by twenty range or something like that?
We could use two of those. Basically, we could have one at the front and have the dignitaries, the podium, speakers. And then the second one can meet, uh, to it where we can have, uh, the visitors, the community people sitting.
Wish I'm before you check on them.
Okay, I will, thank you.
But I don't want that being no indication we're trying to bury the project.
Oh, we won't bury this one.
You know, you know what the room is gonna, we, we're out here in the city park with shovels with the Brazilians. Oh, man, it's awesome. Everybody else can be talking about it now.
What couple of Brazilians signed up, I'll check with them.
Turn the Brazil back.
All right, the, uh. Next last thing on the agenda is a request from, uh, New For You. Uh. I don't know how many of you have been down and looked at the, uh, New For You. But they've got, in my opinion, and I'm not a antique fan. I use that word instead of junk. Uh, but anyway though, they've got a lot of. What you might call good stuff down there. And they apparently done a pretty good business. Now then, they want to expand and they want them to, uh, rent the gym. Which they've actually been using for quite some time for no charge. But anyway though, they're wanting to rent the gym. And, uh, they have, uh, said that they will bear the expense of, uh. Putting electricity in it and they'll pay the electric bill. And, uh, pay us a hundred dollar a month for it. That's not much, but it's a hundred dollar more to get in there. So, y'all have a problem with that?
The gym over here?
Uh?
The gym over here?
Yeah.
Is it, I mean, is it safe?
Sure.
Is what? What'd you say, Morris?
Morris was talking, I'm on, you asked the question, I'm sorry, sir. No, it's, 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 uh, it's safe to go in there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. The only thing in there.
I know it was tearing up so much, I didn't know.
Well, uh. Johnny back quite some time ago, uh. Brought a crew down here and they took out all of the hanging flop that stuff. Noise sort of, so, so it's, uh, yes, it's, 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 there's nothing that'll get hurt on. The only thing you get hurt on in there now, not right now, is what they've got in there.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, now the bleachers on the left side, as you want to do on the left side, are basically still there. But they had taken out the, uh, seat.
Right.
The metal, uh, frame is still taken up there, but they had taken the two by seat out of it. But now most of the lumber is still there.
Okay.
And, uh, Fred Harris had, uh, uh, said that he would put that back. And if they had an auction up there.
Okay.
One night they would be a place for people to sit on the left side for an auction, if that happened. Right now, they're just looking for a place to continue to store the stuff and. Get it out and take it to the bowling alley as they can set, have room down there to put it.
So it's the monthly, they don't monthly re- rent it monthly?
Yeah, a hundred dollars.
How much?
Hundred.
I.
That's it, well, that's not much, but it's more to get in there.
And when, when they decide to leave out of it, are they taking the electricity stuff with them or will it be left outside the building?
It'll be left there, they just cut.
I've noticed they've been running some conduit, somebody's been running some conduit beside that building.
That, that's the meter loop on the backside?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was already there, but we put the cable in it this week. The con, the, the meter loop was already there. We had put that in a long time ago. But then we never did wire it up. So that's what we done this week is put the wire in.
The City of Emmett put the wire in? Well, then he's not doing anything but just getting electricity turned on.
No, no, he's gonna pay for what we spent up there.
So he gonna pay for the meter loop and the wire that we've done?
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably five hundred dollars or better.
Uh, exactly, yeah.
So anything goes into it from, if, if we rented it to them, uh, from that point forward. Be at his expense and then when, uh, we will be under a year contract or two year?
Discuss, he had asked for a, a year period, but it hasn't been no detailed, no discussion about it.
And then anything, any improvements done on the building would be?
That'd be his problem.
Just.
They're gonna rent it as it sits, they're not gonna do anything different to it. I know at one time you talked about somebody wanted to rent it and tear something out and put bays in it or something.
Uh, no, I, I didn't, didn't go along with that at all, but.
But they're not wanting to do anything like that.
No, no. No, no, I know what you're talking about now, Shannon, it was a Firestone, which was used to be Firestone. They was looking for a place for, to store this tubing that they roll, were rubber on. They was looking for a warehouse to store that in. Because they use it so fast that if they run out, well then the place it builds, it's way down in Texas. So they did, they wanted a little stockpile up here, but they wanted that company to pay the rent. And when that company found that out, they said, oh, forget that.
I want a grocery store right up here and I want brokers to pay for everything and have it sitting right out here. That'd be all right, yeah. You reckon I'm talking to me or they?
I might, so.
It's kind of what Firestone was trying to do. I mean, I don't blame them, but try to get away with it.
Would any, uh, operations or improvements or changes in the building be passed through city council?
Yeah, be passed through, yeah, yeah.
Or seal, and, and approve or, or kick out anything done.
Okay, what about the ground on the outside? Whose camper is that?
Yeah.
Fifth wheel?
That's, uh, uh. Some of the Baker family bought that thing down South Coast and, and made it this far with it. And it then turned its toes up. And they had to park it up there for just a short time. And, uh, so anyway, I told them they could. And, uh, so now then, they've come up there and started it up and moved it, well, I say started, they moved it a little ways. And it wasn't ready to go. So I talked to Trey Baker today, he's the contact to this, some of his people. And I told him today that they needed to let us know.
It needs to be moved before July fourth event.
I sure do, I hadn't thought about that.
And whose fifth wheel is that? The goose neck?
That's, that's, that was parked up there. I don't know where Juan knew about it, I didn't.
So it's my goose neck?
It's, you can have it, yeah. Uh, but we won't sell it, we're not, uh, uh, no, it belongs to the goat farm down here.
The goat farm?
Yeah.
They just parked it up there, just?
Apparently so. Now, I'd say they may have talked to Juan about it, I don't know that.
We need to get it moved before July fourth also. It looks bad.
Yeah, yeah, I hadn't thought about that at all, that'd be gone.
I was gonna save all that for new business, but we're talking about that property.
Uh, no, that's fine. Well, we, we, I reckon we finished up this, no, we hadn't.
No, we hadn't moved on.
We hadn't moved it on. What, what?
I make a motion, we rent it to them.
Okay, second.
I make a motion also that if it turns out bad, it's their fault.
All far. All right, now then, uh, no old venture tent.
Can I say one thing about the Fund Part Grant? Uh, you were saying that they would not publish the, um, the bid. Uh, bid, go through the bidding process until after the water, uh, tank is done?
No, 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 that, that wasn't what I meant. Uh. The water tank is, is already published.
Okay.
And it will be, bid opening will be twenty-nine. So, this project, what Daniel told me was it would be ready shortly after that. But it's no holdup because of that.
Okay, as long as shortly after that doesn't take us too far, because it's, half the year's already gone. And we had talked about, uh, applying for the next level grant, which is gonna come out in August. And if we haven't done anything with this, then we, they're certainly not going to.
They're not gonna let us have anything, yes, yes.
Right.
Uh, but no, there's no, there's no holdup. The water tank is delaying the pavilion. Uh, what I was saying is Spears told me that they would have it ready to advertise for bid. Around that time. So there's no, there's no holdup or no delay because of the water tank project. So. So, yes, we, uh, um. We want the water tank project to be over with too, because we got some things that we want to talk with the council about. Our next application, but we can't apply for one until that one, this one is done.
Us to lose this money that we've already got.
Yeah, yeah. So, but anyway though, yes, it's shortly after that time, they will have it all ready. They've been held up because of, of, uh, they've got a, a separate engineer doing the building itself. Uh, Spears designed the layout and overall. But there's another engineer that's doing the preparation for the structure itself. So anyway though, they, 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 they should all come together about. Shortly after the twenty-nine, so, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed one, missed one with that, so. Okay, anything else?
I'm done.
Okay, uh, Randy got something? No, he, no. Um. What y'all got? I see that.
I got, I got something.
Put it on.
We need to, uh. Figure out what we need to do about yards and not be mowed. I've talked to Mr. Booker and he says that we've tried to pass ordinances before, the people have to mow their yards and kind of take care of things. I've got people calling me, want me to come visit with them. I'm scared to go to their house because the next door neighbor yard's four foot tall. Which is why they're calling me, because their neighbor's yard is four foot tall, they got snakes coming out their yard. I mean. I, I promise you, I hate being told what to do more than anybody in this room. But there's a level of respect for the people around you too. People got to take care of the yards. So do we need to create an ordinance? I don't know. Uh, what do we need to do?
As far as legally can we go with that?
Nothing right now. We don't have an ordinance. As far as I'm, from what I'm understanding, we can't do a thing right now.
Well, we can't without, without an ordinance with guidelines.
Right.
Because there are no guidelines established.
Right, right.
But to get, I mean, we'd have to establish something, pass it, and then how would it be enforced?
That, that's gonna be our problem right there.
There's others, that's gonna be a whole. Don't take somebody to draw up a big plan. I mean, this is not just, well, let's do it.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it's gotta be laws and bylaws passed and this is your third written warning or third written letter, certified letter or whatever. And, I mean, I understand, it's a process. But we've got people who've never mowed their yard last year. If it wasn't been for winter time, you wouldn't even see their house. Back, um.
But for why came into this office?
Whoa, man, that's a long time ago.
There was a grant at, that the City of Emmett applied for, and I don't know. Uh, who all was on board at that time. But, uh, the university was, uh. Taking different little communities like, and writing up a plan. Zoning ordinances. Uh, this is sometime in early seventies. Zoning ordinances and, uh, all this kind of stuff that you're talking about. Cattle, everything. And. I feel quite, it was a book about that thing.
Now, now it'd be that thing.
Yeah, I feel quite certain that it was approved, the council approved it, but there's, I can't find any record of that in fact. So, anyway though, I think we might could find one of those books and use it as a guideline. We might could get some, uh, uh, sample ordinances from other towns. Right, uh, I know that, um. I got on the, the, uh. You might call it a blog page really regarding some municipal league. And different communities called in and asked if anybody got an order for this. Uh, this past week I saw one in some little town that asked if anybody had an ordinance on bark and dogs. Uh, so, so anyway though, uh.
That is right.
They put it on the, on the, online and then other towns says, hey, I got this, no, we don't do that, blah, 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 whatever the fact may be.
Right.
So, uh, so anyway though, uh. Vasher has been our attorney for years. Um, we don't pay him anything unless we have something done. But, uh, uh, and I don't know what happened to him in Prescott, he used to be there. Uh, attorney, well, I don't know what the deal was there, so I understand he's not anymore. State and his, Prescott is turning out, but, uh, I believe it's waiting, I said, I didn't. But anyway though, he could help us with that. And if I could find one of those blog books and get Rosalind to copy it for everybody. That'd be fun.
I mean, is this it? Sure.
But seriously though, uh, we, if we get some guideline, now I know it's old. But you know something, don't go out there.
Right, right. I mean, there's still, this is on a book for state, Arkansas from the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, if it's a good solid ordinance and it works and we look at it, everybody's happy with it?
Keep it, keep it.
Right.
But as I say, I have tried to adopt things like this in the past. And we hadn't, we, at that time, we hadn't grown into that world.
Right.
But, uh, no, uh.
As far as what people do on their land, I don't care, but when it starts affecting their neighbors, now they're affecting other people.
Different story.
It becomes different.
And talk about ordinances. Uh, Ty, my grandson, one of my grandsons, just bought him a house in Conway. And I didn't know that Conway had a historical district, but they have, and his house, if he bought it, it's in the historical district.
Well, I would never do that.
No, he's, he's got a, a dog, boxer dog, and it, it's just him and that dog, and they're just, they're family in other words. So he does everything he can for that, that young dog. Well, this, this house got a pretty good size, uh, backyard, and it was open, open to the world, in other words. So he was gonna build a privacy fence around that backyard. No, we can't do that. You can build a picket fence.
You gotta stay within their regulations.
And you can't use a staple gun to make it width, you gotta use nails. Now, if you sprang something like that on some people right here.
I'm gonna go crazy, you, I, I agree, yes.
Man, I tell you, it'd be, it'd be something else, so. Uh, well, anyway though, you wanna us to look into these?
I'd like to look in, yes, I'd like for us to look into that.
Okay, everybody has to agree.
I'd say let's move consciously.
Yes.
And, you know, good thought into it and all, you know, I have found in a couple situations. That, uh, I spoke with an individual that had a lot, and it was just growing up. And I, I stopped in there one day, and I asked, I says, can I ask you a personal question? He said, yeah. I said, this lot over here, and I said, uh, if it was cleaned up, would you keep it cleaned up? Yeah, we just let it get out of hand. And I went down there and mowed it, and I mowed it, mowed it about three different times, and then you could have bailed a bale of hay off of it. And I told him, I said, Bill, keep it, you know, and make it, I said, we need to pick that grass up. I said, would you be willing to come down here, I'll, I'll get a trailer. Come down here, I'll blow it up on a lawnmower and windrow, if you come down here and help me pick it up, we'll haul that little grass clippings off. Okay? Two trailer loads of clippings later, and this was a small lot. Two clippings later, we got cleaned up. And so far, and matter of fact, uh, his lawn is right on, or was broke at the time. I said, I tell you what, you buy the parts, I'll get them to make it work. We carried it down to the house in the shop, we put it up there, put new bearings in it, built it and all. And to this day, he's keeping that lot up.
Very good.
You know, some, some people let it get overwhelmed on, and they need a little bit of help.
Right.
And, you know, there are some people out there that one yard would be the last line they'd even think about doing. You know, some people are just that way.
There's competition in my neighborhood.
My neighbor works right.
She's dark, my wife can't handle it, cause she mowed it, my wife gotta go mowing, my neighbor's gotta go mowing, and this one's gotta mow.
I got a neighbor doing the same thing.
Keep him out on market.
But you need to own the day.
I mean, I, I agree on, you know, some of the places need to be cleaned up. It lowers your, your home value.
When you, when you drive down the main highway out here, oh, this is heavy, ew. And then you keep driving on going, I ain't gonna stop at that store, it's kinda rough, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Just, appearance is everything when you go to places like that, and you can see that.
And unfortunately, on, on our main highways into town, and through town and out of town, that's one of the first things you see when you get here. You see the city limit sign, and then you see stuff like that.
Grass that are.
I found out, and I don't, don't, I wrote, wrote his name, but I don't remember. I reckon called it, don't remember called it, I can't pronounce it. But I found the name of the owner of that property down there on the corner, and I'm gonna try to go see him. If I can't see him.
Maybe if we do something with that corner, or he'll do something with that corner, the next two will take.
It'll spill over on the rest.
It, it is.
It may just be wishful thinking, but, yeah, I mean, if everything down here's clean, you walk in one day and walk outside and go, hmm, my place looks bad.
You know, I, I would challenge any, any Emmett resident that cares about their yard and all. You know, if they mow to this point right here, if they, you know, can do it without getting in trouble or anything. Mow a few feet further, do just a little bit more on cleaning it up.
You know where I live?
Yeah.
Can, can your yard, Rob?
Come across the road, change mowing the Phillips old place up there right now. Cause we try to keep that whole spot that they're mowing.
Yeah.
You can mow that, you can mow that princess.
Yeah, that, that's the name, that guy now. But.
Alright, uh, okay, well, I'll check in to see what we got, see if I can find one of those books, and, uh, and, and we'll, we'll see if I can get them.
I got one more item. And I don't know what all took place, but from what I'm understanding. The table and chairs up here in this storm shelter. Something about we can't move tables, we can't touch chairs, we can't do anything with it, I don't know the details.
We don't loan tables and chairs.
Well, they weren't leaving the building, were they?
And, and, uh, uh. I don't, I mean, ain't nobody been refusing anything, if I know what.
I was told, and they was told not to move the tables and chairs, and not to, all kinda stuff. And this is what I'm trying to find out, cause, it, because they, they was told, well, when they asked why they couldn't move them, it was because things get broke.
That's right.
Okay, if the city of Emmett can't afford a chair or a table when we have a function, especially, especially. A function with a group of women, Eva, who is helping this city, the way they're helping them, then we're in bad shape.
Well, one, one where they started, Rob, was a long time ago. And, uh, people wanted to take chair, table and chairs out on, on the dirt. Well, you know, these chairs that we've got to, to go on the ground. And when they go on the ground sideways, the chairs broke, then.
And that was Eva that done that?
Oh, no, no, this, I said a long time ago.
Okay.
That's when this, this, uh, rule was created, so to speak, about not loaning stuff.
So, I understand your rule, I understand it completely. But I think we need to look over Eva a little bit, I know there's some confrontation with Eva and the mayor, that's gotta come to an end, I'm tired of hearing about it. We've gotta work together, and Eva is a good thing for this community. But it seems like there's always something going on, and I'm not saying this from you, I'm not saying this from Deanna. I think it's both of y'all are at each other so much with petty nonsense that it's, it's done got out of hand.
Well.
Chairs and tables are chairs and tables, if the city of Emmett can't afford for chairs, they don't want Eva to use our chairs and tables? These people who are, are doing the things they're doing for this community, do you think they're good for the community? Eva?
Well, if they would.
Do you think they're good for the community, Mr. Booker?
If they would work with the city, yeah.
Will the city work with them, when you're telling Eva, you can, you can't use that building, but you can't move anything?
If they were.
We gotta quit treating each other like children.
Well, tell Eva that.
This is what I'm talking about. We'll tell Eva that. Mr. Booker, you're a grown man. If the city of Emmett.
Don't blame me on.
I'm not blaming you on everything, it's got, it's a two-way street. But if the city of Emmett can't afford for Eva to use the chairs and tables, we're in bad shape. Not, not Joe Bro off the street using the chairs and tables, this is a group of women who are trying to be good for this community.
Loan it to one, you gotta loan it to all of them, Rob.
No, you don't.
You don't?
No.
They, they were, they were gonna stay inside the shelter.
Inside the shelter, and we don't have to hack them out on the grounds.
They're inside the shelter, and that's what I'm saying, leave them in there.
I think they were locked in the room, and we couldn't get them.
Well, we unlocked it, let them out. The, the very time that Deanna called me, we, we got that room unlocked.
I think we started setting up for the.
Well, first, I think it started with, they was going to concession stand in that room, and you told them they couldn't have it in there, because that was a nine-one-one communication room.
Wait a minute, nine-one-one communication room, that's belong to the city of Emmett?
I know.
Not the county?
It's, it's.
Doesn't belong to the city of Emmett?
First to pay for was the city, I mean, the county.
How much did they pay on that room?
Well, at, at one time, they was paying the utilities and furnishing the equipment.
At one time?
How do you pay utilities on one room in a, in a building?
I think I'm, I'm talking about like the telephones and internet, which.
So they was paying for their stuff?
That bill is on the way. So actually, that, what, what's up right now is the equipment, and they have paid for all the equipment.
Okay, do they pay us rent on that room?
No, they don't.
Does that room belong to the city of Emmett?
Yes, it does.
Does not belong to the county?
No, it don't.
I only charged the city of the county, the nine-one-one area for the room. If we can't, if we can't unlock it and let people to it, if we can't use it?
That is gonna be reserved, if they need it, they could ask.
They asked for it, and you said no.
Because they didn't need it.
Well, because you thought, wait a minute, no, Mr. Booker, you thought they didn't need it. They asked for it, they needed it, or they wouldn't have asked for it. You thought they didn't need it, so you told them no, that doesn't belong to you. That belongs to the citizens of this town. Am I right or wrong?
Well, I thought I was the mayor of this first.
So that, so that doesn't make you the owner of it. You thought that they didn't need it, so you told them no, is that right?
Did they?
Is that right?
Uh, that is right, Rob.
It's not your decision whether they need it. They asked for it, come on now, Mr. Booker. Come on, we're not children.
We're not arguing like little kids, this, this, I'm not caring enough further.
You're not caring any further, let's get it settled. Mr. Booker, you do not own everything in this town, yes, you're over it, and you see over it. But you can't tell people no, because you don't want them to have it. You need to have a legitimate reason why you tell them no. And you just admitted that you didn't tell, you told them no on that room, because you didn't think they needed it, is that what you said?
That's exactly what I said.
So you decide what they need and what they don't need.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Did they manage without that room?
Did they have a choice? Can you manage without this office here?
I reckon I could.
Alright then, but it's convenient for us to be here, right?
Yeah.
It's not your choice, Mr. Booker. You don't own it. Everything here belongs to the citizens of this town, not Dale Booker. Do you understand that?
No.
You don't understand that?
No.
What does Dale Booker here own?
When I took the oath of office.
You say that you own this stuff, and you decide what, what?
If I can't talk, well, then this conversation is.
I'm listening.
No, let, just.
I'm listening.
You'll, you'll start. And when I took over the office, uh, I was put in charge of everything that this city owns. To take care of it, and manage it, and make sure that it was used properly. Now then, what I said by, uh, them not needing it. They moved into the next room beside of it, and had plenty of room to do that and the bingo game. So, that's why, I mean, I saw that to start with, that's why.
You, you weren't there the first time.
Huh?
You weren't there?
Yes, I was.
Not at the first bingo?
It wa, not at the first bingo, no, but that's not when they asked for this room.
They had the room the first bingo.
The room the first time.
They had the room the first bingo.
I know it, without my knowledge.
Well, okay, is the room available for use when you, when you use the building?
Not that room, no.
Then we need to find out who owns the room, and we need to be renting that room out, cause that room belongs to the city of Emmett, uh, city of Emmett. I want that room rented out.
What do you want?
I want the room rented out to whoever's got it locked up, and we can't get in there and use it.
Alright.
So who's got it locked up, and won't let us use it?
I've got it locked up.
Whose equipment is in there?
Nevada County nine-one-one.
And Nevada County nine-one-one needs to pay the city of Emmett for the use of the room.
Okay, alright.
Is that not, I mean, do y'all see this?
What room are we talking about?
What if Nevada County wants this room next? So we gotta close it off and lock it up.
What room are we talking about?
Up here in the storm shelter, there's a room full of Nevada County nine-one-one equipment.
Oh, okay.
The city of Emmett, I mean, if we can't use the room, then we need to be charging for the room, whoever's using it.
So, just I understand.
Now, once, now once Nevada nine, nine-one-one locks it up, that's a whole different story, because they rented the room, it's their room, and Mr. Booker happens to be over nine-one-one, so it's his say one hundred percent.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question.
He's got the room rented.
Is the room that couldn't be rented, was the room with the nine-one-one equipment, was it locked?
Yes. The room that's not rented out is where the nine-one-one equipment is, from what I'm understanding, is that correct?
Okay, yes, so.
Well, it's actually a shared room for the city, and that nine-one-one.
What are the cities is in there?
The what?
What, what, what the city on that's in there?
We've got some computers in there.
Can we, we have another room we can put them in?
No.
There's no other place to put them?
It's a dispatch, Rob. Uh.
We don't need to own anything that's not available to the citizens of this town.
Okay.
So I'm curious, is it just the one room that we can't get in? I'm trying to, so is it just the one room you can't get in, or what the nine-one-one equipment is, but the rest is okay, is that what you're saying, I'm not sure.
Isn't that the room that we have the chairs?
I'm asking, I don't, I'm trying to make sure I understand.
So the chairs that we needed for that knock were locked up in that room.
Oh, in the room, okay, I'm with you there. So you really need the nine-one-one room, just need the chairs in the room, okay, alright.
We're up there and need the chairs and tables, the room is locked.
With the chairs.
Did you not get those chairs?
After we called and called and called, and they went and banged on your door to get the chairs, for you to come and unlock the room?
No, it's on my house.
Yes, Deanna came to your house and knocked on your door.
So, so let me ask you, so we're really talking like the chairs are not the room as well, the problem?
No, I'm talking about the room.
We used the room before.
The room was open the first time.
Okay. I'm talking about the room itself, if we have a room that has someone else's equipment in it, and the cities, the citizens of Emmett cannot use that room? We need to be charging whoever's equipment in there, if you have a room in your house.
Well, I, really, I was asking, everybody keeps talking about moving, that's why I was saying, is it, was it already in there, and you didn't have to move, or was it moved to another room, that's what I'm trying to understand.
They used the room for the concessions last time, and they wasn't allowed to use the room this time.
So we had to move it.
So it's not about moving, it's not about moving furniture, just actually having access to the room, is what we're talking about?
They needed access to the room.
And the chairs.
Both, they locked the chairs with the room too.
So the chairs and the room was in the same place, okay. I'm just trying to ask, cause like, it's just.
This is the petty stuff that I'm talking about, that I get to hear about all the time, that needs to be handled. This could have been handled simple, had two adults had an adult conversation they cannot have. Can neither one of them, neither one of them can have an adult conversation, because they're at each other constantly, yes.
Is it any way the council can look at what we're talking about, cause I'm not sure what you're talking about, so, I mean. I don't mind the city, I just need to know what we're, exactly what we're, so I can see exactly what we're talking about, is there a way the council can go look, so we know exactly what we're talking?
I don't have the key to the room.
You know what we're talking about?
Yeah, I guess, I believe, from what everything I've heard, I guess.
Yeah, but it's kinda confusing, cause it's like.
Yeah, if you're not familiar with the rooms, and the way they're blocked off like that and stuff, yeah. From what everybody said, I, I understand was, what, uh, what room, what was going on there.
Yeah.
So. There's a couple of things that should have taken place during this, and this, this whole conversation wouldn't be happening right now.
Well, go ahead with my question, can the council see the room, cause, you know, or we're not part of this, it's just?
You have to ask Mr. Booker if he'll let you up there to see the room, he's got the keys, I don't.
I don't have no problem with anybody seeing the room. But now, the room, why it's kinda isolated, the room is set up for an emergency operation. It's got, um, four different, three different tables with telephones and, and, uh, computer jacks. Where it can be instantly used for an emergency, should it happen. And I think we have all agreed that we never know when an emergency gonna happen. Not necessarily weather related, but train derailment, or something happened to the dispatcher to jail. Then this one up here is ready for the dispatcher to just come down there and sit down at the desk and start doing their business. Uh, AT&T, uh, will come down here when crigs they can drive, little rock, come down here and set up a portable nine-one-one console. That's all we liked up there, having a complete dispatcher.
Why is it up there?
Backup.
Then we need to charge nine-one-one for the, for the room.
Y'all want to do, that's fine, I mean, but now Eva, uh, when they first, when we first got this new administration for Eva. They made a statement that they don't have to listen to the mayor, we doing this.
No, wait, wait a minute, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, wrong, the mayor is responsible for what goes on in this town. Well, wrong. The mayor is responsible for what goes on in this town. Now, if they can, they started out not working with me and they are still not working with me.
Okay, Eva doesn't have to ask your permission to do anything they do. Go ahead, just do what I want to speak.
I disagree, Mayor.
Because you, you're talking about an individual that's not speaking on behalf because we never thought that we could not work with the city of Emmett.
That's you, Joanne.
Okay, Eva is a group, not an individual.
Right.
But it's ran by an individual.
No, it's not ran by an individual.
Okay, okay, okay.
We understand that we have to get your blessing on events that we have in Emmett. Because they are on Emmett's property.
You and Joanne hope that.
No, we all understand that. But when we do have an event and we have to jump hurdle after hurdle after hurdle to make our event successful because we get told, we can't use that room, we can't use this, you can't use that table. We're trying to do things for Emmett. Do you understand how many people we brought in for the Fourth of July? There was people from Arkadelphia, Girdon, Delance, Austin, Texas. Some of them didn't even know where Emmett was.
I understand that.
So why are we constantly fighting you when we're doing good for Emmett?
That's your leader.
Well, I still got one question. So are there other rooms available and?
It's all one big open room.
It's one big open room?
No, it's, this, this one here is petitioned off.
That's what I was curious.
Building up there.
If it has the stuff that Mr. Booker says it has in it, and I'm sure it does, he wouldn't lie about that, that room needs to be locked. A nine-one-one coordinator room and it needs to be a plaque on the door, nine-one-one coordinator or nine, Nevada County nine-one-one room. And it needs to be charged out to the nine-one-one association to play.
Okay.
I, I don't know what the charge would be for the room. We keep the equipment cool. I'm sure. You can't have all the computers just in the heat. If it gets a hundred and forty degrees in there, you're gonna mess stuff up.
It don't get that hot up there, that concrete building.
So my question, does the mayor actually have other rooms? Just that room? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I mean, I, I completely understand the equipment being locked up in that room, but all I ask is not to put tables and chairs locked up in that room.
Okay.
Don't store things in that room that aren't supposed to be in that room.
Okay, I'm with you now.
The reason they were stored in that room is if we have a, uh, that building is designed, engineered, designed that building as a tornado shelter. Uh, so it's concrete, solid concrete walls. Uh, so it don't get that bad hot inside the building. So, no, we don't run air conditioners up there unless that building is occupied. Then we turn, they fold it with air conditioners.
I mean, I understand that, but all, all I'm asking is things that weren't related to nine-one-ones.
Let me finish, let me finish. The reason these tables and chairs were stored in that room is the building, as I said, is designed to withstand two hundred mile an hour winds. It is designed to hold five hundred people standing up. Now then, if you've got, and I know we're not gonna have five hundred people in there, but, uh, if you have some kind of disaster and you have to house a bunch of people in there, table and chair would be in the way.
If we're housing them, we have time to move them.
I mean, you can, you can fold the tables down and put them up against the wall. They don't have to be in, standing up.
Is there another room there that's unlocked?
Another room that can be locked in, that's my question.
Right now, we've got, we're preparing for Saturday night's movie. So we've got petition, two, two rooms petitioned off. There's the one room that we're talking about, it's, it's petitioned off. The third, there's four rooms in that building. It can be four rooms that's there. The, the fourth room is wide open right now. After this movie, Saturday night, and it's petitioned off where we can control the lights. After Saturday night, everything, there will be one room, three rooms will be one. The other last room is the equipment room, the, the, uh, uh, dispatch room, so to speak. So that's what we got up there. All these rooms have got folding petitions that you can put the petition up, take it out.
Oh, I, I guess my question would, seem like this was saying is that the, the nine-one-one room, cause it does have equipment, could it be separate so that the chairs are not in there and it be someplace else?
We just stored the chairs in there to get them out of the way in case of an emergency.
Right, okay.
But now, when they called, I had, just make sure, when they called and asked for them, I don't know how long afterwards, but it was pretty short afterwards. They were opened up and.
Right.
And they got the chairs.
So the access is not to the room, but just to the chairs, that's what I'm saying. Okay, and that's what, that's what I was confused.
Oh, I was going to say, if the big room is reserved and you've got the tables there, then it's at that time that the chairs need to be brought out because if we're having an event where we expect that many people to sit, we need the chairs.
Is that okay?
Some, if somewhere, we need to make sure that the chairs are removed from that room.
Right.
So that we can then set up the big room. That was what we were needing to do. That Thursday in the evening when we were there to work, we didn't have access to the chairs to set it up.
Right.
So evidently, it must have been that Saturday and I wasn't there that they got the chairs. But if we reserved it, the chairs need to be made available.
I think that, uh, most everybody around here has got my phone number. And when it's actually needed, then it will be opened up. It has always been opened up.
Okay.
We're not, we're not holding the chairs away from some kind of, of a group.
Okay.
That's not, that's not what we do. We're keeping a chair out of the bulk of the building in case we have a disaster and have to house a bunch of people in there.
Oh, these folded up chairs just bigger.
Why not put the chairs in the other room? Their chairs like this. Nothing. If you say the, the walls can be petitioned different ways, then why not just put the chairs in a whole different room?
Right.
Well, that'd be, uh.
Too easy?
I don't think that would have that thing. Uh, now then, there is, there is, uh, fifty chairs. It stays in the open part of it. They're stackable chairs. They're a little lightweight stackable, not like that. They're lighter weight than that. But they're just a good chairs there. Now, there's fifty of them, this, this in this room where they were.
And we've, Eva has said if they break something, a table, a chair, they're, they'll replace it.
Oh, I don't about that.
Well then.
I, I do believe that Eva needs not special treatment, but they shouldn't be treated as the same as any Joe Blow that comes in and says, hey, I wanna rent them.
One who treats the city like that, then, then.
This is where the problem is. You're blaming everything on Eva. Eva's blaming everything on you.
Exactly, yeah.
Y'all are blaming each other for the problems. We've got to be adults and come together.
What was the problem?
I promise you.
When Eva asks girls grow up, well, I don't know.
What's, what's the problem? That's what I'm saying, so.
Are you saying that these women here aren't growing up? Cause they're Eva.
No, no, what was the problem?
Hang on just a minute.
Well, I don't know what the problem is.
Hang on just a minute.
Is this city council meeting?
Yes, this is the city council meeting. We're talking about city stuff.
Alright, go ahead.
Who are you referring to as Eva needs to grow up? Eva is a corporate, a group.
Like to call names, but they, I think you know who I'm talking about.
Who?
I don't like to call names.
Well, Eva is, is a group, so you're saying everybody in the group needs to grow up?
No, I didn't say everybody.
Well, then who?
Well, okay.
I'm talking to you this way, I need to go talk to that person this way, and I promise you, I will.
Okay, okay.
You tell me who you're having a problem with.
When that happens, then no, I'm not gonna do that.
You're not gonna tell me who you're having a problem with?
No, I'm not.
Well, you're causing all of the rest of Eva to have a problem. Because of you and that one person can't get along. Y'all can't work things out. It's causing problems for everybody else in the group who are trying to do the right thing for this city.
Alright.
Well, just one question. Okay, so what was improperly done and what should be done so we'll know what the guidelines are, is all I'm asking. What, what happened?
What now, Maurice?
Okay, what, what was improperly done so that it can be properly done in the future? So, I mean, what was improperly done?
Be honest with you, I don't know. Uh, they, they, uh, finally called me. And asked for the chairs and I don't know how long afterwards, but it was very short after. They was opened up where they could get the chairs.
Okay, so you didn't know anything about it till after the problem.
But now, I, I think a big part of the problem is, um, when John Blow, John Doe, or what are you gonna call him, wants something about the city. They called everybody else before they called me.
That is a problem. If you have a problem with the city of Emmett, you need to call the city mayor.
That's exactly right, but that don't happen, Rob. They call everybody.
I'm working on that.
They call everybody else.
There is no need calling a city employee. Would you call Walmart and ask them to change their stock or their prices on something, just talking to the individual you're talking to?
Exactly right.
That's not the person you need to talk to.
That's exactly.
But I got a question, so, but if he's the only one that has the key, then they have to call him, don't they? I'm gonna ask, did somebody, did somebody else have a key?
There's other keys to that building, but that, that doesn't matter. It needs to go through him. He is responsible, it needs to go through him. Quit calling everybody else in the town and call Dale Booker.
No, no, what I'm asking is, did other people have access to the door with the keys?
Other people have keys. He can't be the, he's, he's, he's not here twenty-four seven. He has people in place to take care of that when he's not available. There's other keys, but it needs to go through him and he needs to call those people and ask them to come open the door. They don't need to call these people on their phones, on their personal time, away from, they're off work, and ask them to do anything.
That would, I mean, that's, that's the problem, Rob, is various people around this town would call my employees and ask permission to do this. Well, my employees don't have that authority. My employees has, their responsibility is to do what I instructed them to do. And I'm, I talk or meet with Juan every morning and we talk about that day's activities. But then there's people that will call Juan and say, you can't go over here to this. Well, he don't have time because I have done give him a full agenda. But now, when, when, uh, when someone calls him with something, uh, important, then most likely he's gonna call me. But now, there's no need for that extra step.
Right. I don't disagree with you one bit. Everything needs to go through you.
I hear this, uh, response about, oh, we didn't want to bother you.
That's your job.
That's my job. That's, that'd be right. That's my job.
That's your job. If I had to call you at two o'clock in the morning, I'm gonna call you. Hey, we got a water line over here that's forty foot tall.
Call me, call me, I like to see it.
I will, I will take, I will work on that issue, but we have gotta work on the issue of, of getting along and trying to make it better for everybody. Because just butting heads ain't getting us nowhere.
Let me ask another question. So, as of right now, the proper procedure is if you want something from the building, go through the mayor first, is that, I think that's what he's saying. Which, which, if that's not what we want, you have to vote on something. We can't just keep. I understand everybody's got a problem, but if we're gonna be a, a, a council and do it right, our, our gonna do it. We have to set procedures, policies, and then go from there. See, everybody wants to do it without setting up policies. Let's set up policies and we can abide by it. I don't mind going by anybody, but bickering and arguing is not gonna get anything from me. I'm just gonna be honest.
That's the thing, right?
Less, but it's on everybody. It's not just the mayor, it's the council too. Let's act like a council and do what a council does. Bickering and arguing among ourselves is just showing that we're all a bunch of kids.
Well, we have to be adults when we talk.
All of us, all of us.
Yes, all of us, that's true.
And, and screaming and yelling and pointing fingers is not the way. Make a motion, vote on it, we can. But pointing fingers and, and screaming and yelling is not the way a council act. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna be honest, that is not a council. We're all out of order, every last one of us. It's not just the mayor, it's everybody in here. So let's go to act like kids and be a council.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay then, then make motions, don't accuse.
What do you want me to make a motion of? When I'm asking him a question?
Then make a motion with the question, but you take them, you take a question, then it's an accusation.
That's why I'm asking him the question because I don't want to be an accusation.
Then what is your procedure you want us to follow? Tell us what you want to do.
Information, I just wanna ask him for the information.
Okay, you got the information.
I don't understand what you're telling me, Mr. Maurice.
Okay, you asked, you asked the mayor a question. He said that all he wants people is not to go through his employees first to go through him.
Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay, then, then that's, that sells it. But to start accusing him of something and saying you're this and that, yes, you are.
What did I accuse him of?
You just say, you know, I'm tired of this and this, that, and Eva, da, 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 da. That ain't got nothing to do with it. Our objective as a, as a council is to set policies. It's not to argue.
So when do I need to discuss the fact that we have two? I'm asking.
This is what you gotta do, okay. Bring a proposal. Instead of point of finger, bring a proposal and say, I would like us to do this. Let us follow it. That's all it takes.
But I don't, I'm.
Your heart is in the right place.
What I want is the bickering between the two opposing.
To stop.
The head buddy.
Okay, but see, okay, what's your, what's your procedure?
I'm asking, I'm asking. How do I propose, propose a procedure for that?
Okay.
You gonna tell him if you can't bicker with him anymore, or he can't do this anymore? I can't do that. And I can't do that with her either.
That's not policy.
Right, that's what I'm trying to ask. What am I supposed to do?
Okay, policy is like this, okay. Do you want to set a procedure where there is access with somebody else with the key besides the mayor?
No, it needs to be through the mayor.
Okay then, that's what he just said. That's what he just said.
Yes, and I agree with that one.
What he, all he said was, all he wants somebody is, all he wants somebody is to ask him first.
We got anything else?
I don't know, how much more tape do you got?
We can find out.
Yeah.
It's, it's a card that's where to be on.
I don't care what he puts out there.
I'm on your side, I'm on your side. I'm just saying.
I think we're on the same side.
Well, but I'm just saying, all he said was this, I don't. If I'm mistaken, if I'm mistaken.
There's ways to say.
I come up to a jar.
Where, where did that thing?
I made a motion we had a jar in.
I'll second that motion.